Meeting number thirteen is now called to order. This is July 2nd, 2018. It is 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can you roll call, please?
McCambo.
Here.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Graham Murray.
Here.
All right. First tonight, we have Mayor's Awards and we have excellent recipients tonight. Glad to be giving these out. The first one or two or three gentlemen in the green, it's good to see that you guys were all color coordinated and dressed up appropriately. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being Model Burlingtonians. Let me set this up first. I was invited, this is the first year I got invited to the, I can't remember what he just said. And it was awesome. I was just totally impressed. The showing was phenomenal. I saw all the hard work that went into it and if I'm correct, I believe the first one that you guys had, there were like twenty-some people that showed up and there were hundreds. But anyways, it was just awesome to see that going on our community. I want to recognize you guys. Back to this. Your dedication to your country, your community, and physical as well as mental fitness is commendable. We are blessed to have you all in our community and we feel safer knowing you are here. You help Burlington, you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On July 2nd, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Sergeant Carlos Ruiz, Sergeant Austin Allen, and First Sergeant Jesse Howard. Would you guys please come on down?
So, this was our seventh fitness camp that we hosted.
If I would, if I would, I'm going to have you guys face us because the camera is going to be, I'm going to have you get right by the podium.
Right there, the lectern there.
And then face us so that everybody on TV can see you. They'll just have to eat the back of your head. That's how we understand.
So, this is the 2018 Iowa National Guard Fitness Camp. We're blessed to have hosted now seven fitness camps across three different towns. Started in Fairfield and moved to Middletown in 2015. We started off with roughly twenty students. Now we're upwards of two hundred students that participate. Somewhere around nine high schools this year were there. And out of it, it's hosted in Middletown, Iowa. So, the week that we host it, we double the population of Middletown. That's pretty awesome. But we have a ton of national publicity that comes out of it. We've, we bring in many, many speakers that talk about what we do in the Army, but we also talk about what they do. And so this year, we're blessed to have seven Army Olympians. So, they came from the Army World Class Athlete Program in Fort Carson, Colorado. And so, the Army footed the bill for seven Olympians to come here and they were able to talk to a gold medalist who was a three-time Olympian, a young lady who just competed in the Olympics in 2018 in Pyeongchang. And they talk about how they struggled, what they go through, how every single one of them have failed. And, but they talked to the students about what they can do to achieve success and that's through teamwork and hard work. So, we're honored to offer that in Southeast Iowa. We're the only ones, we're the ones that created it right here. It's now the template for a national program. So, we have states from all over the place reaching out to us. And when they, when they ask where we're at, we just have to reference to Burlington because they don't know where Middletown is. So, it's, it's pretty awesome to be able to do it. We couldn't do it without Sergeant Allen and Sergeant Ruiz, the other ones running the show. Just a mastermind that put it together and then they run it. So, it's awesome. But thanks Mayor for showing up, for assisting us. That shows the community that you're bought into, the youth as well. So, thank you.
Real quick, so I've got a couple of questions. You're not going to get off that easy. So, how many aid counts did he have to do?
The mayor?
Yeah.
Too many to count.
Okay. Mountain climbers?
Again, too many to count.
Pollups?
Yeah.
All right. I just want to make sure he got through the wringer. Listen, I've been to boot camp, I know how it works. I wanted to make sure he had the opportunity to experience what the...
He was more there for a PR role.
Yeah, I know. That's what I was worried about. He's a real sweetheart. We all love him around here. We love him around. I just wanted to make sure he put in some sweat, so...
Well, it was sweating, it was hot. Whether you were working out or not.
It was hot. Okay, all right, that's just what I... And I took a lot of pictures, that was. Otherwise, we were going to have to break him down right here and he's got to get his work in. Any other questions?
No. Excellent work. Thank you guys.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. You guys don't have to stick around now. You guys can get right on down. You're welcome to if you want. We appreciate you coming down. Thank you. This next award is, I'm really glad to be giving this out tonight. This man is, he represents Burlington. And every time I see him, every, what is it, twice a year, he sends out poems. And he's quite the poet. I'm just really honored to recognize you tonight. He's a wordsmith, that's what I call him. But anyways, and I'm hoping that you brought something down that you would read, something fantastic.
Can you read my book?
Absolutely. Let me read this off and then I'll have you come to the podium and share what makes you so special to us. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a Model Burlingtonian. Your eloquence and creativity, your passion and good nature, along with the fact that you're just an outright wordsmith, is felt in your poetry and I can feel it. You help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. And on July 2nd, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Ralph Montchurney. Would you please come on down?
This is for you, sir. If you don't mind, I'm going to take your case and wish it...
Very good.
Fantastic.
I think so. I didn't want to ask, but yeah.
Don't say that publicly. Anybody to know that I'm getting three months? Okay. Here, this is yours. I'll give this, I'll give this to you. If you would, please.
I paid for this one, so.
That's right. I paid for that.
So, I just want you to know. Okay. I'm going to get my glasses out.
Take your time. This is going to be well worth the wait.
Okay. Now, I think I read two of them. If you don't mind, they're both, one page, they're both shorter ones. I'm sure, I'm sure everybody's had this experience. First one is modern technology. You can tell I'm nervous, I'm in trouble opening the pages of my own book. Okay, here we go. Modern technology. Let me rank this first. Now, this is a water steer. This is a poem. I just had this first line of rhyme and I couldn't throw it away, so I made up a story to go with it. Drinking my beer, I watched a hefty steer without a peer run off the pier in fear. He ran from a butcher into the sea so it wouldn't be dinner. The chef was going to considerable effort to please the diner, a customer who had always been no slouch of a spender either. A great white shark swam by way to the dine on steak. Just then a ship approached the dock. A large fish rooted by propeller swam by and the shark forgot the dinner by the pier. Unfortunately, the steer was so winded and weary from his experience, he ended up as a steak and downed flan against supper. That wasn't his plan, but sadly, he ran so slowly after lowly sailor got onto shore that his fate was sealed and the tar reached it by far. By the way, the tar is a sailor. That's another name for sailor. A man named Michael O'Shea went gliding on his way that day in May. What should this bit of nonsense do for your good sense? If you can't run with the wolves after swimming in the sea, stay out of the water or you'll not recover and may soon discover it isn't a laughing matter. Now, if you read a lot, if you read some sensitive to that, tell me because there wasn't supposed to be any sensitive to that moral. I just wanted something to end the poem with. This is modern technology. Modern technology, don't you love it sometimes? Phones are small, you can call from anywhere. The Everglades or Denver or even your car. Help would be right there. Maybe. Oops. It's moving on me.
Modern technology.
Television's larger and they've gone digital. Of course, they cost more and you have a choice, plasma or flat screen. Cars are computerized, soon they'll be able to drive themselves. You may not know where you'll end up. Super repairers are out, expensive ones are in, done by a mechanic and computer technician. They can test and catch a cold on a prostate cancer earlier. Of course, they've got to have to go up your butt or draw blood to do it. As I said, modern technology, don't you hate it sometimes? Thank you very much and thank you for the award.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down. God bless you. All right. We're off to a good start. Next, we have a, I don't see Nancy here.
Okay, thank you.
We'll pass that. And if you want to get on out of here, you can, you can get on out of here, too. We thank you for coming down. Next on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have seven resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving the purchase of an easement from 2500 Mason Road, PIN number sixteen dash zero seven dash one twenty-seven dash zero zero eight for public utilities and a pedestrian trail associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk. The third is a resolution approving the purchase of a permanent easement and temporary easement for the First Presbyterian Church, PIN number sixteen, excuse me, sixteen dash zero seven two zero one dash zero zero six for public utilities, a pedestrian trail and construction, and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk. The fourth is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary easement for SS Mary and Patrick Church of West Burlington, Iowa, and John and Paul Church of Burlington, Iowa, PIN number sixteen dash zero seven dash one twenty-six dash zero one one for construction and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk. The fifth is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary easement for 1431 Cambridge Drive, PIN number sixteen dash zero seven dash one twenty-seven dash zero one three for construction and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk. The sixth is a resolution accepting the Community Development Block grant for the Locust Basin sewer separation. And the seventh is a resolution amending fees for the environmental nuisances. We also have public hearing set for July 16th. The first is a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, going to make somebody a lovely home. Second is a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 918 Locust Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, ditto. The third is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Historic Tama LLC for encroachment into the right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 300 to 310 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. The fourth is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Mason Road Shared Use Path Project. And the fifth is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 White Park renovations. And we also have two appointments. Mayor Protem?
Yes, we have a reappointment for the Airport Authority, Charlie Walsh, term expiring June 30th, 2022. And we have two reappointments for the Economic Development Advisory Board, reappointing Owen Sloan and also reappointing Elizabeth Van Black Sally. Sally.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the Consent Agenda?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th Street. I'd like to take, talk about the easements for the, and also for the plans for the Mason Road sidewalk. So, all the easements has to do with that project.
So, two, three, four, five, and then four as far as for the hearing dates.
So, two, three, four, and five. Two, three, four, and five have to do with getting the right-of-ways. Yep. For that. And then the Mason Road Shared Path is number four. Yep. Some of the hearings.
Okay. Anybody else like to have any removed from the Consent Agenda? Okay, council? Okay, can I get a motion?
So, moved. I've moved to approve all items listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda except for Resolution 2, 3, 4, 5, and set date for public hearing number four.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay. Now, this is time for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland?
This property at 209 South Gunnison, home built approximately nineteen hundred, one-and-a-half story home, two-bedroom, one-bath, forty-five by a hundred-and-fifty-six-foot lot. Does require clean-out upgrades. Licensed plumber and electrician are required per resolution to inspect or complete any upgrades to the property as needed by code. All permits shall be received and codes shall be met as applicable for work and occupancy of the home. Purchaser shall maintain property and yard and hold insurance upon approval of sale by the council, with work being initiated within sixty days and completed within a hundred-and-eighty days of approval by the council. An extension of a hundred-and-eighty days may be granted if progress is made. Failure to meet the timeframes may result in forfeiture of sale and purchase. Quick claim deed shall be transferred to purchaser upon completion. Purchaser shall pay a minimum of five hundred or ten percent down upon approval of sale, whichever is greater within the entire amount paid within thirty days of sale approval by the council. Currently, we have three bids. Erica Walker, thirteen-one Whittaker at fifteen hundred, Aaron Tolander, 206 South Huntsberry and Winfield at five oh one, and Patrick Smith, thirteen oh three South Central at five hundred dollars.
You have bids from each one of them for five hundred dollars?
No.
No.
Erica Walker, fifteen hundred dollars, Aaron Tolander, five hundred and one, and Patrick Smith at five hundred.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we have a high bid at fifteen hundred. We're going to open up the auction. If there's somebody that is here to bid on this property and your name has not been listed, we'll have you come to the, have to come to the podium and give us your name and address. Let's let the fun begin. We have a bid of fifteen hundred dollars? Do I have a, do I have a bid of, yes, sir?
Sixteen.
And, and you are?
Ronald Reddick.
Can I have you come to the?
Move me.
Yeah, come to the lectern, please, and give us your address and stuff.
Good.
Please.
Your name, what's your name, sir?
Ronald Reddick. I represent AH Limited, the rental company.
Okay. Address?
My address is 3109 Market Street, Burlington.
Okay, sir. And your bid is?
Sixteen hundred.
We have a bid of sixteen hundred. You can sit down from here on out. We just want to make sure we get you on paper, okay? We have a bid of sixteen hundred. Do I have a bid of twenty-six hundred?
It's a little bit of a jump there, man.
We've got a bid of sixteen hundred. Do I have a higher bid? It's going to make somebody a lovely home. Do I have a higher bid, higher than sixteen hundred? Going once? Going twice? It's going to make somebody a lovely home. Apparently, it's going to be yours. Okay. That is sold to Ronald Reagan, Ronald.
That's a good one.
Boy, that's a flashback, isn't it? Gorbachev, tear down that wall. Ronald Reddick of 3109 Market Street for sixteen hundred.
Okay. I move to close.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Here, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions...
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
There should be a motion.
Oh, yeah. You do.
Call a motion, move.
Yep. And I would like to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa. That property be sold to Ronald Reddick of 3109 Market Street in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Kathleen?
Okay, this is on the motion, gentlemen.
That's right.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reddick. We'll be selling some more properties coming soon. Next is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Depot White Boxing.
Forgot that I was up here to do that. So, the plans and specs that are currently in the office are to white box the north side of the depot, the former Greer's Restaurant. This project was started back a year and a half ago when the Economic Development Authority recommended giving a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of funds to white box the facility. And in white boxing, that means bringing the utilities and the, and the structure up to ability for it to be rented. That coupled with the seventy-five thousand dollar challenge grant has been the funding source to try and do this project. Last fall, when the stormwater sewer was installed at the depot, a sanitary sewer lateral was ran in the same trench. So, fifteen thousand dollars was already spent prior to, so we have a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars remaining of funds available to do the project. The plans and specs calls for a new water service to be brought over, of which we have already partway over. Sewer lateral to the rest of the distance. New gas service, HVAC system to be brought up, drop ceiling, new window panes, new doors, and then general drywalling and electrical outlets and things like that nature to be done so that a potential tenant can come in and rent the facility. The estimated project cost is at a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars and change. There is some remaining work in the great room that needs to try and be completed as a part of this project. It was something that's always been hoped for is the floor, the flooring in the great room has not been up to the standard that we had hoped it to be from the, from the prior project and that's at an estimated cost around thirty thousand dollars. So, that brings that, that project estimated cost up to one, to one sixty-four. So, so leaves a little bit of buffer for, for some other things to be done. Engineering has already, engineering and construction administration has already factored into that cost, so there won't be anything additionally charged for that.
Questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None.
Can I get a?
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
And I'm going to recuse myself on that one.
She's having no heart of it. Okay, can I get a resolution?
Here, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2018 Depot White Boxing.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Upstee.
Okay. Number three is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Tama Building Permeable Alley. Mr. Tisland?
This project is a, is a permeable pavement or it commonly known as a green alley project between Washington and Jefferson Street and between Third and Fourth Street. It is, the reason why they're calling it the Tama Building Permeable Pavement Alley Project is a, it's a private partner, public, or private-public partnership to do the alleyway in a green alleys form. So, the Tama Building developers have agreed to do the southern section of the alleyway and that's been the match for the grant funding that we've received. It's the IDALLS, Iowa Department of Agricultural Land Stewardship Program where we got grant dollars to do the north half or our half of the alleyways we've been referring it to as. Eric, I think, has a copy of the image of the pavers that we'll be using that look relatively the same as, as the traditional paver style with the coloring and the shape. This project will be coordinated hopefully with the, the project that's to the south. There is a timetable that is needing to be met by December 31st of this year. So, there will be some things that'll be a part of the contract to make sure that we don't complete this project and not get it. So, we are financially obligated to, to try and, to pay for the rest of the alleyway. So, this project is, it goes down and essentially it removes a lot of the subgrade work. There's rock that's brought in and it helps filter out the water. It slows down the water and it cleans the water prior to getting into a drainage tube to get into the storm sewer. So, that's the, the purpose and the reason why they call it a green alley.
Okay. Starting with this alley, going to see if it's easy to maintain, et cetera, and possibly expand it on that.
Correct.
Questions or concerns from the audience? Marlon Brando.
Marlon McKee, 1121 South 12th Street. Used to work for the utility company. We tore up streets and alleys all over this town. If you're going to do this, are you going to go along and anybody that has a sewer down through that alley, replace it? Make sure that it's new so that five years from now, somebody doesn't tear all that up? And then all of a sudden, now you've got, where it isn't compacted right and you end up with cobblestone alley where nothing is level?
There will be utility conflicts in the alleyways downtown. Specific, I mean, that one will have utility conflicts. I don't know what will be, will be moved. I mean, gas lines can, can be rocked around and encased. As far as sewer lines, I don't know that there's any sewer conflict in that alley. I think a lot of them head out to the street.
Okay, well, that's my question.
I don't, to be honest, without a GIS map in front of me, I don't know where that is.
I would hate to see us spend money doing our half or even his half. And then, six months down the road, just like on Central Avenue, you, you went in, you fixed, supposedly fixed that sewer there by that daycare center and now the daycare center had to have the sewer torn up right next to where it was repaired. This alley, like I said, we, when we did the alley from, and this is back in the late seventies, we did the alley from Jefferson Street to Worthington Street right over here between Fourth and Fifth. And when we did that, they wanted the brick put back in, so we went in and poured concrete and then we had, I don't remember Herman's the name, but Herman the juror.
Herman Schaefer.
Yeah. Yeah, come in and laid all the brick in there so that it looked right. But there's concrete underneath that. And that's, you know, my only concern is, five years from now, somebody has a sewer that does it. And if you're just doing this with just gravel and stuff and then there's dirt below it and there's nothing solid, then you could end up having that settle down, just like we had out there on West Avenue where the guy doing the subdivision that you put.
The reason why that was, because that was cold patch prior to the asphalt plant being able to redo. There will be concrete put back in there.
Well, it should've been concrete instead of asphalt.
That's the developers.
Well, it should be ours because it's in the city street.
Correct, but that is their exposure in that location.
Again, there you go. That's what I'm bringing up. It was about the alley. Make sure that it's taken care of so that five years from now, we don't end up with, you can't drive down through there. That's all on this one.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or concerns from the audience? I would just like to say, I agree with you, Marlon. We ought to try to do our very best to do it right the first time. Well said, well said. Counsel?
What's the grade on that alley?
It's kind of steep towards the north side of it and it levels back out.
Do we have any concern with washout? I mean, if we're gonna use bricks and we're gonna be putting loose sand in the middle, we get a heavy rain event, are we gonna have experience?
It's chipped rock in between. They're pretty packley tight. That image maybe doesn't give you, it's, I mean, you're not talking big gaps in between there.
Okay.
And they're set. I mean, they're rolled.
So, you don't have any concern as far as washout goes on that?
No, they tend to take the water.
This is the first time that anybody's done permeable pavement, Mike.
In this, yeah, in this town.
It's proven, a proven process that you're using.
The city of Dubuque has installed 200 alleyways in their town. And they've used various different paver types and they have installed it on steep grades. And they don't tend to have any issue. Actually, the water gets taken into the pavement and so that way that the washout.
You guys got any other questions?
No.
No.
Okay, good, thank you.
Your Honor, a motion to close?
Second.
Move in second. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2018 Tama Building Permeable Alley Project.
Second.
Move in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Resolutions?
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding a contract for the 2018 Mount Pleasant Street HMA overlay project. Second.
Mr. McGrady?
This project was not let locally. It is a DOT-funded project, so it was let up in Ames. This project has come in a little bit over the estimate, which is done four years ago. This project was an STP project back in the day, which is the STBG project, Surface Transportation Program. They have too many acronyms with the DOT.
But you're welcome.
But this funding was something that we had applied for four years ago. As a part of that funding, this was a, this project will be a four-lane to three-lane conversion on Mount Pleasant Street from the gear to Roosevelt. So, it's a large stretch. It is a dual municipality project. West Burlington has been a part of it. They actually have a larger portion than we do. It is a, the project was bid at $1.6 million. The original estimate was at $1.5 million. So, it's a little bit over budget as far as the estimate goes. But we've discussed it with West Burlington and they don't have any issues as far as the ability to fund the gap that's there.
Wasn't the budget amount 1.7 million?
For overall. That, I mean, we still have, out of the 1.6, you still have engineering costs and then so 14% on top of that. So, with that, we are... This is an overlay project, so we will, you know, there will be some curb and gutter work along with intake work. But most of it will be mill and fill with asphalt and then the re-striping of the lane configuration.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Your Honor? McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, number two.
One other question. When is that work gonna start?
To give you any sort of a timeframe, it's, since it's a DOT project, there are some paperwork processes that I have to go through with the DOT. For instance, we just sent back Mount Pleasant Street Bridge paperwork to the DOT to sign off on performance bond. So, that was let and awarded in early June. So, it'll be a month until you see some of that work started.
But that's gonna be a this-year project.
Correct. I don't know that it will get done on that type of schedule. It'll depend on the contractor and their ability to start and then what their timeframe is.
Okay.
Okay, number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the plat of the Ridge subdivision. Second.
This is a subdivision located in the Two Mile area of Des Moines County that has subdivision review by the city. Located north of town, just under a mile off of Upper Flint Road between Irish Ridge and Highway 61. Give a little closer look at it. It is a 21-lot subdivision with two access points into the subdivision here shown in yellow and then one longer drive that extends north off of the West Access Road. There are, as mentioned, 21 lots. This did go to the Planning Commission on June 19th and was voted six to zero to recommend approval of the preliminary plat based on meeting the county standards for subdivision and lieu, meeting all site design standards of the city zoning code in condition upon lots 20 and 21 having frontage on a public roadway. The staff did have a recommendation that all lots along a dead-end roadway greater than 750 feet in length and open only at one end be required to have a residential sprinkler system. This recommendation was not carried forward by the Planning Commission, so it's not part of the resolution unless otherwise amended by counsel.
They are trying smiling. All right. Questions or concerns from the audience? Chief?
I just want to clear a couple things in this.
Good.
Here. One is, we were asked to review it. And so, our guidebook is the International Fire Code, so that's what we applied to it. Couple people had mentioned, well, there's other subdivisions in the county that aren't following your rules or our recommendation with the fire department. Well, we've never reviewed any other subdivisions in the county. I think, remember a couple weeks ago when we were applying this 750-foot rule in the city? That was one of the arguments made. Well, there's a lot of subdivisions in the county in the Two Mile that you haven't applied this to. Well, we never did review those. We were never privy to that or had the opportunity to do that. So, I guess, a couple things is, one is, I don't know what the purpose of the fire department reviewing or the Two Mile zoning. And I don't wanna, I mean, I'm not sure why we review it if we're not gonna, to apply our zoning rules to it. And I'm not saying you have to or not. I'm just saying, we reviewed it and that's the recommendations. And if we had another one next week, we would apply the same IFC rules to that as well. So, this subdivision, it, from the one access point where the two roads converge, that's where you start measuring the one access point. And it's, it's twice of the 750-foot limit. I'm not, I can't remember, Mark had measured it out to the end there, to the cul-de-sac, but... So, there was that. And the other thing was, that had been mentioned, well, it's not even, you can't sprinkle houses out there because they're on wrath and water. Well, that's not true. That, that can make it work fine with wrath and water, so I guess that's the only two, two points I wanted to make. And they are gravel roads. We've had fires in the county. That's a very long turnaround distance for fire trucks, so just something to consider, so.
We talked about this last week and we had no control over what, this is just a review, isn't it?
Yeah, well, for us, but I'm just, again, I'm just wondering.
But your points noted, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm still curious. And you're the same curiosity that you have. Why would you guys have, why would you guys have to review that?
Why, well, I guess, get us air.
We have subdivision review. He's reviewing to the standards as far as our maximum length of a dead-end roadway in city code is 750 feet. The only way to go beyond that in the city is if they have sprinklers installed such as Mr. Zizer. So, the only way this, I guess, would meet our city code is if they installed sprinklers through that subdivision process. The difficulty is, we don't have building permit review in the county. But the options would be either approve as is, approve with sprinklers over 750 or cap the maximum length of the roadway to 750, which is our city code.
But Eric, even if we approved with sprinklers, there's no level enforcement on our end.
That's the difficult part, because we don't, no one building permits come up.
So, I'm a developer and I'm a county.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have to get a permit.
If this came forward in the city, we would either require sprinklers or say,
Right.
we don't allow roads over 750 feet that are dead-end. So, like, they would have to just cap the turnaround or dead-end at 750 feet. That would be the alternative if you didn't want to allow sprinklers.
Yeah, I still think that's overstepping again.
Well, but we just did the same thing to, well, we...
And city limits, though.
Mr. Zager's situation was much the same.
But it's in the city limits.
Right, and it's the...
That's the difference.
But the purpose for the plan review outside of the city limits is should that, we ever annex this property that would become part of city limits, that it's compliant with our current code. That, I mean, that's the reason why you do the two limit.
So, with that information in mind, we should review it and approve it as if it was in the city limits. Correct, isn't that...
Is that the idea?
That's the purpose of it.
Chief, do you have anything else to...
Nope.
Anything else you want? Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? Lee, you got anything you want to say? Okay. You look so excited to be here tonight. Okay, Kathleen, let's do this.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution providing for a salary adjustment for the city manager.
Second.
I guess I can take that one, I guess, but the, everybody got their rates at two and a quarter, started on July 1st. I was late on bringing gems up and they'll figure it out and make it right so it comes up on the 1st. But anyways, we still have to vote it in every year and review him every year, so. Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I think we covered this in the work session, but it's the same rate as all city staff.
Yeah.
Right, correct.
Voice good?
Yeah.
Kathleen, let's do it.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving a change order for the Flint River Trail Phase 1 South A Trail Project.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
This is for the trail along Bluff Road. We've gotten to a point, we've gotten an easement from Iowa International Investments, from Andrew Hoth and are at the point of Lamont Limited. We've been working with them quite a few months now on continuing the trail along Bluff Road in front of our property. We require an easement ranging, I think, from about two feet up to eight feet on, along Bluff Road. Had some discussions on how to continue this trail in this area as right away gets narrower or steeper and had some, I guess, general agreement that they would allow that easement provided some other improvements were made. This would realign their driveway. We're gonna have to do a retaining wall on their existing driveway here and have a new driveway further to the north entering into their parking lot. And then, some storms who are improvements as well in order to extend the trail this way. So, this change order uses remaining REAP funds that we have. This is kind of a second continuation of the project that was started last fall on Bluff Road. We had approximately $60,000 in REAP funds remaining and then the remaining coming from local option sales tax that we have for this. So, we wanted to try and expend all of our REAP funds while we have them instead of trying to apply for more grant funds in the future. But this change order was for $64,449. As I mentioned, just over $60,000 of that is from REAP funds, but contingent upon receiving assigned easement from Lamont Limited. So, we've had discussions. They've in general approved the plans that we're doing here. And we've sent them some easement documents, but we haven't gotten those back yet. So, we want to make sure we don't go forward until we get those from Lamont. But this'll hopefully keep the contractor on site before he leaves in that we can expend those remaining funds and get the trail a little closer to completion.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Get her done. Okay, Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of an easement from 2500 Mason Road, PIM 16-07-127-008 for public utilities and a pedestrian trail associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk.
Are we just gonna deal with all of these?
Yeah, can we deal with all of them?
Yeah, we're just gonna deal with all of these at one time, Marlon?
We have to, but you're gonna have to introduce them separately.
Yeah, we have to do it.
Right on, right on. Go ahead and read through them.
I do need a second. Second.
Go ahead and read through them. Let's just, can we do that?
No, just do them all at the same time.
Do them all together, that's fine.
So, you want me to read the next order?
No.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Well, it all ties together.
Yeah, unfortunately, though, the way...
Okay.
Yeah, then we'll do our thing.
A while back, when this was all talked about, and I didn't know the names of the streets at the time, but Sequoia Drive could tie into Cambridge Drive and it'd be a nice straight shot. It would give you your second access out of the school. And you aren't gonna have all the kids getting drowned because of your Mason Road. You know how it gets flooded. You got cars that are getting flooded in there. The kids are gonna walk by and they're gonna get splashed like, oh, get out! It's gonna be a shorter walk for them to go the other way. The parents, I just think, I don't know why we're going along Mason Road with a sidewalk. You already got sidewalk on Cambridge. I think that's Cambridge there. And then, yeah, that one. You already got sidewalk there and you've got sidewalk on Sequoia. If you bring that on through that property, you can put a street in there and you can put the sidewalk in there instead of doing this.
I hear what, I hear what you're saying.
And I think, if you're gonna get grant money for this sidewalk, you would get it for the sidewalk up there. And it'd be less sidewalk. It just, it doesn't make sense to me.
I feel like that needs to be done and a sidewalk.
Otherwise, one of the rains, I'm gonna drive through there and splash every kid I can. But I think, just to prove my point.
I think that's gonna be dictated by the need for actual road access in that area. Because when the road goes in is when you would put the sidewalk in at that point. You're not gonna build the side, because we don't know...
They're not talking about building the road through there.
But eventually, that's probably what's gonna happen. When we saw the diagram, what, at the start of the year, there's a road plan for that area. So, once that plan's implemented, as it's implemented with properties that are developed in that area is when that sidewalk would go in. I think it's a good point. I think...
Can I go over there for a second?
Go ahead, go ahead. I hear what you're saying. I still think we have to have that road on, sidewalk on, there's a road built.
Yeah. You've got housing in there, but you're not gonna have houses built there. Well, so... So, you've got, you can just bring this right on over here and tie it in. You're gonna have the street in, which are gonna tiff in anyway. So, go ahead and put the street in, do the sidewalk, have it said and done. You got, instead of everybody going out to West Avenue, you're giving them a second access this way. I've never understood... Last time I had this turned off.
Don't turn that off.
Yeah. I've never understood why we have the artillery street there. It goes 25 mile an hour down there by where Haskell Street is. But it's 35 out there, except now it's 20 mile an hour at the school. We don't have kids driving. We don't have kids crossing the street there. Why is it 20 mile an hour there? If we'd put that road in, you wouldn't have to have the 20 mile an hour zone there, slow down traffic. They'd all be coming in this other direction to get to the school or out of the school. It's just...
I think you might still have to have 20 mile an hour.
I'm pretty sure about that.
Because it's on the side of the school.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have traffic, so that's, that's the main corridor for that area, Marlon. So, you're still gonna have traffic pulling in and out, which is gonna warrant the reduced speed. I think...
The only people coming in and out of there are the ones coming down Mason Road. If they can come this other direction...
But Mason Road still, still borders the school and that, it's gonna, that's gonna be a mandate.
That whole idea of Mason Road was that it was an arterial for fast-moving traffic. 20 mile an hour is not fast-moving traffic.
That's true, but what changed, but what changed that rule is the, is the school, and I think that's...
Which was another dumb idea, but... Another soapbox, another day.
Marlon, I agree with what you're saying. I think those things are going to be done as those developments fill out. But to put in a road based off of what the project cost is right now, you're talking about a significantly larger sum of money to be able to finish that out.
Just put in the sidewalk. You're putting in a 10-foot wide sidewalk. You're not putting in a road, you're putting in a 10-foot wide sidewalk.
The problem with that, then, would be is they would then have to tear that sidewalk out to install the road, so...
They can put it in alongside the sidewalk.
But when they, when they build a road, they still tear out a large sum of that earth to be able to form your road in, pour your road, and then they backfill it and pour their sidewalks. So, I wouldn't, I understand what you're saying. I think at some point in time, that's going to be the case.
I'd like to see the specs on this sidewalk that's gonna allow that guy with his semis and with his combine to be able to drive across it and not tear up the sidewalk when he's doing his crops. Because that's all crop land right now.
Isn't the entrance for that on Messiah?
I don't know what the specs on the width, the thickness of the concrete are.
I think his entrance is on the Messiah Drive.
But?
I think it's six-inch concrete, but regardless, can you talk, can you talk a little bit about the funding? I know it's... I know it's a TAP grant for this. It's a transportation alternative program through the DOT. And so it goes towards trails. Sometimes it goes towards buses. It goes to things other than actual road funding.
This was applied for and received at least four years ago for, you know, TAP funds for continuous, continuation of the trail that connects out to the Recplex. So it scored on key indicators of extending existing trail, making further connection to the school, to the Recplex, to the hospital.
Then why don't you do that on West Avenue?
This was continuation of the existing trail that comes from West Avenue down behind Fairway to Edstone School. One of the benefits is it does allow pedestrian traffic for those that attend the school, but it's also a bike trail. It's not just for students walking to school. It's also intended as further development of the bike trail as we get further east towards Crepeau Park. It scored based on those criteria. The development of a sidewalk to the north, as Mr. Rinker mentioned, would typically occur with development of that area. There are currently three different property owners along that area. So until that development pattern gets laid out and how those streets are connected, then we won't know exactly where those sidewalks would be, and those sidewalks are installed.
We already had the grand plan of where Dan Cahill's land was going to come out and tie into Dill Street and everything else out here.
That's just Mr. Cahill's, but on the south side of that is Mr. Morfeld's land. And Mr. Morfeld hasn't presented a plan for how he's going to develop that. So that's why I'm saying it doesn't make sense to go in and put in infrastructure that may change in the event that his development changes.
But there's houses in there right now off Lavender Lane.
Yep, and that's Mr. Meyer's development. So, and that, that plot's been approved, but it doesn't go all the way to the west, which is what you're suggesting. So the land, I believe, is owned by Mr. Morfeld.
Yeah, this, this lot's owned by Mr. Morfeld. This is Sunrise West. This is Lavender Lane, and this is the church.
Sure. So I, what I think is going to happen is as Mr. Morfeld presents his plan for development, he's going to be expected to provide a connection there to Sequoia. And at that point in time, when that connection's made, is when the sidewalk with them will go in for that. So I agree with you that it does need to be done. It's just we wouldn't want to do, put a sidewalk in before we put it in the street. Because like I said, when you do that, we're going to have to tear the sidewalk out, put the streets in.
Mason Road's going to get done, though, first. That's what's, that's what's going down, though. That money, the grant money's already for Mason Road. It's going to get done, and even if the school isn't there yet.
I will contact.
Right.
Never mind.
Did, was that, is that answering all your questions for the easements, sir? Marlon?
Well, you're going to do the project, and now you've got to have the easements. You're not going to change the project, so.
Okay.
The funding was for specifically on Mason Road. We can't change the funding. It's a DOT project that we have to follow what was applied for and received for those grant funds.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Okay.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of a permanent easement and temporary easement for First Presbyterian Church, P I N 16-07-201-006 for public utilities, a pedestrian trail, and construction and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk.
Second.
Questions or concerns? Counsel, we're good?
Yep.
Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Number four?
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary easement for SS Mary and Patrick Church of West Burlington, Iowa, and John and Paul Church of Burlington, Iowa, P I N 16-07-126-011 for construction and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk.
Second.
Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
And number five?
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary easement for 1431 Cambridge Drive, P I N 16-07-127-013 for construction and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk.
Second.
Questions or concerns? Counsel, we're good?
Yes.
Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
And I have a set date for public hearing, July 16th, 2018, consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Mason Road Shared Use Path Project.
Second.
Questions or concerns? Counsel? Okay. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay. You guys have been fantastic tonight, and we've come to a close. And Marlon, yes, sir?
Do you want to add more comments?
Comments?
Comments for the audience.
Marlon, I'm so sorry. Comments from audience? Or comments from Marlon? That was a, that was a slip. I don't want to shut down any comments. If you have anything you want to say, you definitely can. Sorry about that, Marlon.
Well, who's in charge of the garbage can project?
Not me, but you don't want my opinions.
Sure, maybe I do.
We've got, we've got Don here who could probably answer some questions for you, and Nick could probably answer some questions for you, too. I know what you're wanting.
Well, uh.
And actually, hold on, let me, let me rephrase. Actually, we can't, this is comments, so we can't. This isn't, yeah, this is on the agenda, so you can make a statement. But it's not like we can answer questions about something that's not on the agenda. So this is just comments from the audience.
When's it going to be on the agenda?
I think it's on the work session next week.
I'm not sure if it's next week or the week after.
One of the many tacos I'm going to miss.
It's on, it's on the work session for next week, for next Monday.
The next council meeting is when it would be up, and you'd have the opportunity to speak on it and ask questions.
Not on this coming Monday, the Monday, two weeks from tonight.
He can still speak out. We just can't answer questions tonight.
Right, right, yeah, tonight.
Okay, so I'm going to speak on it, and then I'll come back down in two weeks' time and speak on it again.
That's fine.
Did you know Ford Madison just went to garbage cans like this? Do you have them charged in for their garbage cans? $15 for the 65-gallon can, not 17 and a 50 or whatever we're going to be doing. Also, my brother just had knee surgery, and I, in Cedar Rapids, I went up there, and they have all these nice little cans, and he's got the 35-gallon can and the, and the 65-gallon can for recyclables. And I noticed something. I noticed one of the concerns was we were going to be saving money because we could have fewer people saving on gas. What I saw was you're doing double the work because you can only load the truck from one side. The lady still had to get out and get cans that weren't within her reach of the thing. Or do we have the style that's going to be clamping on and then dumping? You can answer that question.
Yes.
I have no idea, Don.
Uh, it's going to be a hybrid system?
No, we don't. That's a fully automated system.
What did you just say? Hold on, okay. Didn't you just asked if we're going to have, if we're going to have cans that are going to be, that are going to have the attachment where they get automatically dumped?
Well, I think, yeah, they have one where they go out and lift on the handle and dump. The way Cedar Rapids is set up is it clamp, it reaches out, clamps on, comes in, dumps, goes back, and goes out. Again, there are cans that weren't put in the right place, and this is in an elderly housing development. But, and it's all paved, and they all had them at the driveway, but they didn't necessarily have them in the right place on the driveway or there were cars blocking it. But it's like when you go down my alley, you pick up the garbage on one side. Now you're going to have to turn around and come back down the other side because you can't pick up from both sides. You can only pick up from one side on those trucks. So I just wanted to, everybody had actually gone to see them in operation. I guess I'll be down here in two weeks to bring that up. And by that time, maybe I can go to Cedar Rapids and get film of them doing it, so, sorry.
No need to be sorry. Thank you, sir. Questions or concerns? Anybody else from the audience? Okay. Thank you all. Mr. Tisland? Kathleen, you good? Uh, LGM?
Oh, just a quick note. A couple of weekends ago was the youth triathlon at Dankwart Park. And if you have never had the opportunity to come out and view that, you're really missing out. It is just quite a thrill to see the little kids aged seven to 14. They swim, and then they jump on their bike, and then they run, and the parents are cheering for them, and the grandparents are going crazy, and then the kids, everyone gets a medal for finishing, and they had some really neat trophies this year. So next year, take advantage of that in June, the youth triathlon at Dankwart Park.
Uh, biggest thing at, Fourth of July, of course, everybody be, be careful, and you know you can't set those fireworks off in town. So please do not try to occupy our police department with that. Go out of town, go in the county. They love you out there. Gus Macker registration is July 16th. It's a great opportunity to show off our town, call your cousins, your aunts and uncles, get every kid you can to sign up, come to Burlington, play a little basketball, so take a look at that.
All right. I was just going to just remind people again to be respectful. The Fourth is coming up, but there's no reason to get disrespectful, and that's what we call for adults to be adults and to regulate the children. That's what, that's what a job being a parent is, making sure that they're not doing things they shouldn't be doing. So we want to have a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July, so have a good time. But let's be respectful as we're, as we're having a good time. Um, I think that's it. Mayor Prodigy.
Cutting everyone off. Just a reminder on the 7th, which is Saturday, is the Symphonic Blast out at Crepeau Park Band Shell. And that's always a fun time. They, they time the music for at the end for the fireworks show, and it's, it's, it's pretty awesome. I always try to make it out there every year, so that's around 8:15 is when it starts. And so get out there, bring a, bring a chair and some bug spray. That's all I have.
It's going to be awesome. Well done. Mr. Rinker?
Um, I really don't have a whole lot. I just had a question. Chief Kramer, do you know, are we doing anything special in order to try and combat firework activity? Do we have extra guys on, or what issues are we running into there?
I have not hired any additional officers for the Fourth of July. We usually have five or six officers out, and I think it's, it's staff for that, that day. It's hard to project exactly when they're going to set them off and to do that. Last year, we had the, the barbecue up on Maple Street, which was really helpful. Wasn't rescheduled for this year. We did, we didn't sponsor that event last year. We participated in it, but it wasn't brought back again this year. But that's not to say that we're not going to be up there in that area to make sure that, you know, problems don't arise, and just not in that area. The calls for service still come in. I think this last weekend, we had 30, just over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 30 calls, calls for service for fireworks in the, in the area or in Burlington, which I don't know if that's high or low, but I fully anticipate our response is probably increasing on July 4th, but we'll respond as needed. And the only thing I could add to that, like the mayor said, just be careful and respect your neighbors. These kind of explosives are not meant to happen in town. There is fire hazards that happen with those, and they need to be mindful of that. And this is why some of those are allowed out in the county where it's a little more, I guess, vast area than there is in the city. So we just ask that the citizens, you know, don't set off the fireworks that are going to, that are going to cause those type of injuries or, or fires, so that's basically what we're going to do. I look, I'll look at the manpower, but I think we're probably at full strength on that night, so we should be good. And if they need additional, we have additional available.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, chief. Anything else, counsel? City manager?
Agency Street West, the west section of Roosevelt, you should see a mast arm go up. We've got some power lines out of the way now. The east side, it looks like, to the, to the naked eye, it looks like there hasn't been much moving at all. There has been some concrete poured, but there's been a lot of utility conflicts to try and get them out of the way, so. Uh, it's, it'll be, it'll be tough to get them all out of the way, you know, in time, but we're working at it, so. And then Flynn Hills Drive, you've seen some patching work start on that one. That'll, that's an asphalt overlay project. I don't know the, the timing and when those. And then also the Seal Co. project just kicked off, too, so we're in full road construction swing right now.
Nick, where do we sit the river?
The river, it, it's currently crested at 17.7 right now. It's supposed to hang pretty, pretty even for the next couple of days, but I don't think the skunk, the, the rain that they got in Des Moines-Anceny this weekend, I don't think the skunk will affect us. It, it'll be several days until it gets here in, you know, down at the mouth, anyway, but it typically has an effect at the Missouri River.
Yeah, I think it, it looks to me like it's just, because it was going to drop pretty quick, now it's going to be a slower decline, but we should be all right. They didn't, actually, they downgraded the crest by about three inches. So before the, during that storm, so right after that storm, so we should be all right.
I downgraded crest, too. It doesn't get your teeth as clean as they say. Listen, I want to say, we had Saturday, they had the taste of Burlington out to the Bee's Park. It was phenomenal. It was super hot. But I got to go out there and eat a $20 worth of food, or rather, take $20 worth of food with me, and I stopped at Y'all Come. I came and ate some, some good food, so that was, I thought that was pretty successful. Hopefully, we won't have the heat like we did this year. The only other thing I had to, oh, boy, it just, that's what, that's when you're getting old.
Yeah.
It just went, it just went that quick, that fast, so. Enjoy your youth, kids, while you got it. There's nothing else? Question or clue? Second?
Second.
All righty then. Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.